I am calling the regular meeting of the zoning Board of Appeals of the Town of Orleans to order. I'm Michael P. Marneck. This year, I'm the chair and also with me are members Bruce Taub, George Warre, Matthew Cole, Peter Javlin, Emily Van Geeson. Also present is the building commissioner of the Town of Orleans, Tom Evers. Our agenda tonight consists of three items. The first, one of which is, as usual housekeeping, is to consider the minutes of the last meeting, which would have been April 17th. I didn't receive the minutes, so we'll dispense with that. And the three items are a continued item from possibly last year. I don't seem to be favored with the agenda that was posted out.
All right, thank you, Mr. Evers.
That's it. That's the additional... The agenda has three items. And the first of which, and we'll go in numerical order, number 2104. That's the application of David Courier for a special permit set forth in General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 6, under Arlene Zoning Bylaw, Sections 164, 17D, and 164, 17E, to allow the establishment of a fifth bedroom in a sewage disposal system for a single-family dwelling in groundwater protection district two of the properties located at 136 Baker's Pond Road, Arlene's map number 60, parcel number 417. This was... Now, you can see that Mr. Courier is present. This was considered once before. Mr. Courier was asked to submit further information. One time he was accompanied by counsel. Considering this will be myself, Mr. Cole, Mr. Warre, Mr. Javlin, Ms. Van Geeson, and you can bring us up to date?
Yes, sir.
Yes, you may. That would be a good place.
So, sorry, Ben got caught up in...
You kind of have to refresh everyone's memory because it was something a little different. We needed more information.
So, normally, if this wasn't District 2, this is a Board of Health issue. And now that I'm District 2, it's a Board of Health and it's only a Board of Appeals issue. I'm buying nitrogen credit land from my neighbor up the road. It was approved by the Board of Health. It's 10,000 square feet. I don't own the land. I own the nitrogen credits. I have nitrogen rights to that land. So, we came here, proposed it to the board, and at the point, it was a little new to everyone to know and whether they knew where it was. And they wanted me to come back with a, I guess, a picture, for lack of better words, of the credit land and the other owner's lot and the credit land marked out on his lot. So, I am back with my picture. And the engineer made the credit land, like, 17 square feet short. So, I had to get it reprinted, and I only got two copies of it. So, I'm sorry.
Okay. I have a...
That's just the land.
...plan showing the policy grant of Title V nitrogen loading and restriction and easement. And it stayed done, prepared by a professional land surveyor, dated April 22, 2019. And the easement... Now, you are going to be or have been granted the easement. You are or already granted the easement?
I'm waiting for you guys to approve it.
No, but you haven't... You don't have this from your neighbor yet.
Well, I told him that I don't want to purchase it if it doesn't get approved, but it's already in writing. He has the whole thing filled out. Ben has the paperwork, and he was going to bring it, but he's stuck in...
I have a copy.
Okay. So, you don't need it unless we grant a special permit.
Why?
You'll satisfy all the requirements that are necessary.
And just so... I know that in these meetings, neighbors are called. You know, a lot... I don't know if any of them... If you got any of the letters, I got, like, verbiage from my neighbor.
No, I remember specifically. I don't have to file a department. The board secretary isn't here, but I do remember at least one of the ones, a letter expressing no objection to it.
I know a few of them said that they would... They needed me to write a letter, and I asked them to. I never followed up with them. You know, all the ones I talked to didn't have something. They said they were writing a letter. Whether or not they did, I don't know.
Are there any questions by any members of the board?
Some neighbors, go ahead. So, all of your butters were contacted, and you've received no objections?
Well, I had to legally notify them.
And you've received no objections?
Nope.
Okay.
Not that I know of.
Well, they knew there was a meeting here tonight, so...
And that the Board of Health, the Board of Health I had to notify to. They were notified for the first meeting here. I mean, obviously, it was a continuation, so you don't keep going through the process. But they were notified from the Board of Health, and they were notified for the first meeting.
Okay.
They know about it.
Mr. Warre?
Yeah, the purpose of the easement is to negate the requirement for the additional 10,000 square feet, to make, basically, the septic system complying, so you don't need a variance?
I'm not sure if I fully understand that.
Well, you have to have 10,000 square feet per bedroom.
Correct.
You have 40,000.
Yeah.
So, you're getting another 10,000, basically, to negate the requirement that's in the application.
Exactly.
Because there was a question of a variance being applied for. So, now you don't need a variance for that particular issue.
No. I don't... I don't think...
Do you want me to get mine? Yes, please. The other question, basically, is I thought on the... Where you had a map drawn, basically, that you should indicate the location of the accessory dwelling. That's not true.
That's not what... That's the lot that I'm getting it from?
Yeah, but you're going to build an accessory dwelling.
Not on my lot.
No, you're going to build it on your lot.
Yeah.
So, that should be indicated where you're going to put it, because I'm concerned certainly about meeting setback requirements and other things with respect to setbacks along that particular piece of property. So, knowing where the accessory building is, I can't judge that.
David Little, Rider and Wilcox, I have peripheral knowledge of this, so I'll try and help out. With respect to the accessory dwelling, he can do all that by write. And that's why, and I'm sure Tom Evers will allude to that when he's here, he doesn't need any relief from the zoning Board of Appeals for the accessory dwelling.
But there are requirements that he has to specify under 16440.
It's under... It's already built.
That's something that is dealt with through the building department, not the zoning Board of Appeals. And Tom Evers, who will be here shortly, can address that for you, Mr. Warre. The nitrogen credits, it's a common thing that people can do...
I understand that.
...to help out. But with respect to the accessory dwelling, that's a zoning issue that's handled by the zoning enforcement officer. If there were... If it was in any way lacking, he would be sent here to the zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay. It sort of makes sense to me if you're going to put an accessory building on, there are requirements that have to be met. For example, the 800 square feet, 2% of the property, and a few other things.
I agree 100%.
It'd be nice if it was presented.
That's not germane to what is happening here. That's an issue that you deal with, with the zoning enforcement officer. If he didn't comply, Tom would send him here to get relief. He doesn't need relief from that, so it doesn't need to come before the board.
Okay.
David, where's the nitrogen exchange? Where is that outlined?
It's a Board of Health regulation...
Board of Health.
...that we do in many towns.
So, what is the form of relief and the mechanism that we would do this under?
I'm thinking that it would be done as a special permit, but not under 16444. It would be done directly under 16417D... E. In that case, I think we need to determine that the benefits outweigh the adverse effects based on the impact of the groundwater, the impact of the recharge volume of groundwater. I think that's it. That's what is cited in the application. Looking for relief under 16417B2K.
B2K, sewage, yep, yep. Sewage disposal systems that the wastewater flow is determined by Title V exceeding 110 gallons per day for 10,000 square feet of lottery.
Maybe you can find it, maybe you're quick.
17...
B2K.
B2K.
Page 23.
Yeah. That's where I have it. Mr. Warre, your questions were appropriate. The building commissioner is... Has retrieved the file. I think we were originally going... Originally heard this sometime in January, I think, or, excuse me, February 6th. And we were satisfied at that time that the only consideration was whether, as the zoning bylaw requires us to permit the sewage disposal system, because Baker's Pond Road, or at least a portion of it, is in groundwater District 2, Protection District 2. I don't have a memory, Mr. Warre, of how this came under the... Came to be... Under this type of consideration, was placed under the Board of Appeals, where we talked about last time that the Board of Health usually had a better handle on these kind of problems. So, when Mr. Courier explained the transaction, as he's illuminated tonight, then we thought we really ought to see how real the easement was, was not necessarily how real the easement was going to be, but that it had been considered and was defined so that at least the Board of Health in the future could oversee the fact that it was done correctly and therefore the fifth bedroom, which was on... You have two structures on your property.
Yeah. The Board of Health has already approved it. They're not issuing...
They have.
Yeah. Whenever you go to the town hall to apply for anything, they always say you guys want last crack to get everything, no matter what it is. They want all the approvals when it comes to you guys. So, this has been... This was approved back in, like, November or December by the Board of Health.
I'm thinking that...
On conditions that you got, you know?
I'm thinking that the findings would determine not only that the benefits outweigh any possible deficits, but also that the design is sensible and reasonable and has been considered to implement the purposes of the zoning bylaw because of the plan. That's what I think... I could draft a decision, but that's the... Would be the essence of it, if there should be such motion.
I don't dispute that. I guess, just basically on my experience, certainly, if someone's going to present a case and says it has been approved, I don't think we should take the verbal. Or certainly in the past, I have never taken the verbal, but someone would come in and say, "This is a record from that particular decision by the Board of Health or whatever." Certainly, in this case, I'll yield to your interpretation, but I'm just saying, you can understand where I'm coming from, to have something specifically defined that it occurred. That's all.
That was basically our consideration back in January, or, excuse me, on February 6th, that we wanted a little bit more, not a little bit more, we wanted more information to know that this was all in the works and would be adequate to serve us, the fifth bedroom. Mr. Evers?
When I do process the permit, it goes back to Health for their sign off.
That's what I was going to say. He wouldn't be here.
I won't be issuing it without them. They haven't signed it off on a permit. They've just okayed this. So, when it goes back to the Board of Health, they'll go in, their records find out, and has American...
So, you can't prove the permit?
...go back to the Board of Health, and I'll get a signature.
Until I get your approval.
All right.
So, it's one of those...
Catch 22.
How are we going to frame this, Mr. Marneck? Like, what would I propose to make a motion that we approve this?
You would make a motion to the zoning board allow the petition for a special permit upon findings, and I'll draft the decision.
I would like to... If that was in appropriate time, I'd like to make that motion.
Very well. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Van Geeson. Is there any discussion on the motion? For the record, is there anyone present wishing to speak concerning this application? There's no positive response. Then I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Then the motion carries and I will make a decision.
I have upstairs. Pay as you throw.
Very well. I'm going to file this, though.
We need one.
Yeah, pay as you throw.
Mr. Marneck, yeah, we got...
Yeah, we need one for the file.
Thank you.
That was what it was all about, Mr. Courier. I have next to the corner, 4111, which is the application of Jay Chakleford and Holly Chakleford for that the record reflect that Mr. Cole is excusing himself from the hearing. This is an application for a special permit under General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 6, Section 6, and by law, 16421, Note 5, 16443, and 16444. This property lies as an 89 Portimica Road. It's in the zoning District R located on Arlene's map number 75, parcel number 84. The proposition is, the applicant proposes to construct an addition to an existing dwelling and the result of building coverage would exceed 4,000 square feet. Is there... All members currently present will consider this application, and I'll ask whether any member of the board considered this, has had any communication with the applicant or any of the applicant's agents, and should be disclosed to the public and to the board. There's no positive response. Therefore, I declare all members of the board to be indifferent and impartial. Mr. Ryder... Excuse me, Mr. Little of Rider and Wilcox is presenting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. David Little from Rider and Wilcox. And I will point out, there are some interested neighbors and butters here in the audience for this application. I appeared before this board not too long ago for a similar request. At that time, we came before you, and the Shachelfords were proposing to build a new dwelling. They abandoned that project where, well, I should say, a special permit was issued for that for the same reason, we exceeded the 4,000 square feet in coverage. They abandoned that project, and they decided to construct two additions on the rear of the existing dwelling that they lived in. So, the new proposal before you, the site plan that I showed, shows the addition that's going to be constructed on the north of the house. And as before, because of 16421, Note 5, we exceed 4,000 square feet. And if I weigh, if I may, by way of history, when the town adopted what we call acre zoning, it's not really an acre, it's 40,000 square feet of buildable upland, not too long subsequent to that, they adopted this regulation that states building coverage in a residential district shall not exceed 15% of the buildable upland. However, building coverage in a residential district shall not exceed 4,000 square feet without the issuance of a special permit. And I've always been under the impression that this additional regulation was promulgated because for some reason, they thought that 10% of 40,000 square feet is 4,000. And that would be a reasonable number to expect someone to build on, or 10% building coverage would be a reasonable number. But they allow people, or allow applicants, when they need to exceed that to come before the board. So, what I would like to point out, and it shows on the right-hand side, the coverage calculations on the site plan, the existing coverage is 4,311 square feet, or 2.2% of the lot area. And the proposed coverage is 5,761 square feet, or 2.9% of the lot area. So, that being said, it's a very small increase, or relative to the size of the lot, it's not a significant amount to exceed. There is an existing barn that was just completed on this property. The garage is proposed to be removed. There are two conservation restricted areas that have to remain as you see them in perpetuity, with the exception of the garden, that the Shachelfords have the ability to work and maintain. So, what we have is a very large piece of property. We're citing the additions on the rear of the dwelling. They are well away from Portimica Road, and I think the citing of them is appropriate. So, that being said, I'm going to move toward the special permit criteria. As to the adequacy of the site, we believe the 4.59 acre site is adequate for the addition. The resulting building coverage for the site is 2.9%, which is well below the 15% maximum. The residential site is suitable for the addition. The dwelling in addition will conform to all horizontal and vertical requirements of the zoning bylaw. There would be no new impact on traffic flow or safety. We believe there will be no impact on neighborhood visual character. The additions on the rear of the house are located 250 feet from Portimica Road. As to the adequacy and method of sewage disposal, source of water and drainage, the dwelling will tie into an existing Title V sewage disposal system, which is located out near Portimica Road. The property is served by town water, and there are no stormwater drainage issues on the site. The adequacy of utilities and public services are not impacted by the project. There will be no noise or litter, other than temporary noise impacts generated during construction, and the dumpster would remain on-site to contain all construction debris during the project. And finally, as to the impact on groundwater quality, recharge volume, and water quality of coastal and freshwater bodies, we believe those valuable resources will not be impacted by the project. So, I'm available to answer any questions to the board. Thank you.
This particular... Excuse me, boy. You basically have reduced the size from the previous proposal. I think previously, from my numbers anyway, the coverage was going to be 6,576. So, you've actually reduced the coverage on the property.
Yes. It previously was approved for 3.3%, and we've reduced that down to 2.9%. That's correct.
And the other question has to do with bedrooms. It's difficult to know what you had, but look at what... Currently now, I think you're going to have four bedrooms.
Well, actually, the office, Mr. Warre, by definition, it affords privacy, so the office would be considered a fifth bedroom, from the Board of Health perspective.
Okay. But on your drawings, basically, I see 1, 2, 3, 4 bedrooms. I think the initial structure has two bedrooms, and then the garage area, and the top of those, each says a bedroom.
That's correct.
So, it is four bedrooms. And what... How... What is the septic system sized for that's currently apparently in place?
It's sized for nine.
So, it's been approved? There's septic system? If we go forward with this?
The... No. The building permit has not been applied for yet. But I expect that during the application process, as Tom mentioned earlier, he sends it to the Board of Health, and we aren't asking for any variance, as I fully expect this to be approved.
This is straightforward, special permit on the Note 5, isn't it? I mean, it's the 15% and the 4,000, blah, 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 blah. That's really what we're talking about exclusively.
Yes, it is. So, a good part of the property is encumbered by conservation restrictions, but that's not to be... The area of those larger restricted areas is not to be deducted. So, you retain your percentage so that it's going to be 2.9%. Any further questions? Is there anyone wishing to comment upon this application, object to it, support it? Yes, sir.
Dory Flinchuck, 26-foot limit of road. I think this is... People have done a great job conserving this property. It's only one house. That property could probably have been subdivided into three or four lots, and then you would have four... You could have 16,000 square feet of coverage on that same piece of property if it was subdivided. They've been great neighbors. They've done a great job on their barn. I can't say enough. I've never met them, and I can't say how well they've done this house.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
I'm Mark Harry, and I have two properties that you're right. I'll tell you one of the butters' properties, which I own two. And reviewing the last plan and this plan, I think this one is outstanding, and I have no problem from the standpoint with the location of the setback and the way the bond has been done very tastefully. What I've seen on the architectural plans, I think, are at the table, you know, based on the property that was there before and keeping it in taste of the corner of the street. property that was there before, and keeping it in taste with according to style.
We appreciate your testimony. Is there anyone else wishing to comment? Any further questions, members of the board? Very well, then I'll close the hearing for taking the testimony, ask if there's a motion to issue a special permit in accordance with the plans furnished with the application, and for the reasons expressed in the application.
So moved.
Mr. Tom moves, and is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Javelin, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion for a special permit. I will write the decision. Thank you. For the record, can reflect that Mr. Cole has rejoin the meeting. I have final item of business for the night, is the application of Roberta Hurlbert for, for a variance or a special permit set forth in General Laws 48, Chapter 48, Section 9, under Orleans zoning by law, Sections 164-21, A, Note 5, 164-43, and 164-44. To construct an addition to an existing dwelling and construct a cabana. The proposed building coverage on the property will exceed 4,000 square feet. This property is located at 41 Nossett Road, which is Orleans map, number 22, parcel number 70. All the following members will consider this application. Myself, Mr. Cole, Mr. Javelin, Mr. Tom, and Mr. Van Giesen. Is any member of the board had any communication with the applicant or any of the applicant's agents, which ought to be disclosed to the board and to the public? There's no positive response, therefore I declare that the board is indifferent and impartial. This property is in zoning District R, and Mr. Little is here to present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, David Little from Ryder and Wilcox, representing Roberta Hurlbert. And I hope, I can only hope that you all had the opportunity to come and visit this site. It's quite a, quite a spectacular site in Nossett Heights that Roberta owns. We've worked with her on and off for probably 25 years on this property. The presently on the property, there is an existing five-bedroom dwelling, a garage with a, two garages, each with a bedroom above, and a septic system that is designed to accommodate the existing number of bedrooms on the, on the site. We are not proposing any additional flow with the proposed additions. What, what Roberta is proposing to do is add on to the north side of the dwelling, and then closer to the water, construct a cabana, and construct a pool. The pool, as shown on the plan, can be built by right, we don't need relief from the board for that. But as with the earlier, the previous application, we have a situation where we are exceeding 4,000 square feet in coverage, so 164-21, A, Note 5 comes into play. We do exceed that trigger, so we're here for a special permit. As noted on the plan, the existing coverage is 3,867 square feet, or 6.5% of the lot area, and the proposed coverage will be 4,687 square feet, or 7.9% of the lot area. I provided you plans on, I gave you a GIS overlay, so you could see how this site relates to the, the surrounding properties. And I also provided you plans by HSO contracting that show the proposed addition and the proposed As to the special permit criteria for, for the project, the 1.37 acre site, we believe is adequate for the additions. The resulting building coverage for the site is 7.9%. The residential site is suitable for the additions. All new construction will conform to all horizontal and vertical requirements of the zoning by law. There would be no additional impact on traffic flow or safety. The addition and the cool house or cabana are in keeping with the architectural style of the buildings on the property, and will not have a negative impact on neighborhood visual character. The property is served by a Title V sewage disposal system, town water, and there are no stormwater drainage issues on the site. The adequacy of utilities and public services are not impacted by the project, and there would be no noise or litter, other than temporary noise impacts during construction. A dumpster would remain on-site to contain all construction debris and litter during the project. And as to the impact on groundwater quality, recharge volume, and water quality of coastal and freshwater bodies, we believe that this project will have no negative impact on those valuable resources. So again, it's, we're here strictly because of the coverage, and I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Very well, are there any questions, starting with Mr. Wong?
Basically, you're reducing the number of bedrooms from seven to six. I hate to ask this question, but the owner is over there and up LLC. Is there any particular possibility that there will be home occupancy required, or?
No, that's, it's, that's been the name for.
So they're not going to put a couple of offices in and sell things?
No, she, she, that's the last thing that, that.
Just ask her. Okay.
No intention to do that at all.
Intention to do what? I missed that. I couldn't.
Have a home office occupation, because it's an LLC.
Okay. Thank you.
I think that's, she's supposed to have been directed by her attorneys to, to put the property into that. But there's no intention of conducting any business or anything out of the property.
Thank you.
Is there any concern relative to the coastal bank?
None. And fortunately, or I should say, more so deliberately, we've located the proposed pool and proposed cabana over 100 feet from the top of the coastal bank, so we do not have to appear before the Orleans Conservation Commission. Additionally, the bank in this area is quite stable. Who's to say 50 or 100 years from now, how that, how stable the bank will be with sea level rise, but there are absolutely no issues right now, Mr. Tom.
And so looking at the number 41, and the big circular structure, what is that currently?
It's a.
Gazebo.
Ornamental garden with a gazebo in, in the middle of it. It's, there are brick paths with hedges and.
And the location of the pool and the cabana matches between this.
The cabana, because it's an accessory structure, has to be located at, at least its height away from the side property line, and we do accommodate that.
So it's sort of where the structure, whatever this is, here?
It's, yeah, it's going to be located, this is a hedge. With some, with some lawn chairs in it, so yes, the pool and the cabana is going to be located in that vicinity. The, we, on, on page five of the plans for the cabana, we note the height is being 16 feet, so we have a 2.3 foot buffer that we're providing, with the 18.3 foot set there.
Are there any other questions, any members of the board? Is there anyone present wishing to support this application? Yes, sir.
I represent my brother, Dr. Ross Stoffield, at 38 Nossett Road.
Yes, sir.
Also trustee to my daughter's property at 36 Nossett Road. That's a Sarah Symptons' vote in trust, and we have no objection whatsoever to this property. It answers both ours property, and I've known Roberta Hurlbert since she was three years old, so I may, that's how far back. Just to give you a historical significance, the house of my brother's, in 38 Nossett Road, was built by John Stewart, right on the lot line, way back then, long before the zoning laws ever existed in the town. Not a fact. It's a pre-existing occupant.
Well, nobody was raising that question. But, but your testimony that Ms. Hurlbert's a good neighbor makes a lot of sense. That means by inference, we, we could make a finding that the neighborhood would not be adversely affected by the, by the construction. This is, that shows your, your brother's house there.
Correct.
Right in 38 is in back of 36.
38 is the little cottage in the back.
Those lines are, those lines are correct, I could see exactly how close it is to the boundary line.
Yeah, with GPS, you can know everything.
Is, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this application? Very well, then I'll close the application, I'll close the hearing for taking his evidence and ask if, if, is any commentary, any members of the board. I, I see this as a relatively benign application and improvement. From over here, it's an improvement, at least a general improvement to the neighborhood.
I can find no grounds for objection, though I wish I could.
So that's just you, I know.
I understand.
Thank you, Mr. Tom. And I'll entertain a motion to grant the, why would we, in the alternative, you were looking for a variance.
No.
Different application.
Okay, that was a mistake.
Did I check that?
No.
No.
I think so. Mr. Chairman, I move that we issue a special permit.
Very well, is there a second?
Second.
On Mr. Javelin. Is there any discussion on the motion? And all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. Members of the board, I have no further business. Well, I, I do in a way. Although the board secretary isn't here, I have received a, an email from a person who was interested in Boofish Outfitters, and was expressing interest in.
I can't hear.
If that's ever reconsidered, that she would like to have this email considered in connection with it. That's really not before us. I have.
I received that today.
Yeah, so I'm just reporting you, reporting it, because of transparency correspondence. I also have, and it looks like a chart of, I think, furnished by the town clerk or some administrator. I think that I can deal with this with each member privately. The clerk likes to have, or prefers to have evidence that each member, and this applies to, to all boards, I think, having received the open meeting law materials, having acknowledged receipt of the conflict of interest summary, and has provided a certificate of completion of online conflict of interest training, something which is urged upon each member every, I think, two years. I'll report this to you privately as to what is claimed that the, may be needed. And I somehow or other, I'm included on this list too, so it's done pretty even-handedly. We should also be considering, this is May 1st meeting, and we should also be considering the succession. I have been on the zoning board for nine into nine years. I don't know off the top of my head whether there's any restriction, but I've been chair for about eight of them, all of which have been pleasant years, and I'm not complaining. However, there comes, and I'm not resigning, there comes a time and place where there should be a logical and sensible succession. I wish that everyone would consider that. Unfortunately, I have been provided tonight with a correspondence from Bill McCarthy, who does suggest that he doesn't want to seek reappointment when his term ends on June 30th, 2019. He doesn't, he appreciates the town's support for his appointment and reappointment over the time which he served, and he would like to have the opportunity, as a good lawyer would, of sitting over there and representing, representing applicants. He leaves open the possibility of volunteering for other town boards and committees. So we won't have Bill McCarthy on the board after June 30th. So think about who you might want as your chair for fiscal year 2020, which starts July 1st. Otherwise, there's no further business, unless anybody has any comments.
Just a question, if there's, I missed a meeting or two. Was there, has there been any updates to any open disputes or cases, or anything of that nature?
No, there is, there is, we are under considerate, considering now, and it will be, we'll hear it again on May 15th, the application of the developer on Cold Road, with oh, seven or eight, two-family condo units are being constructed, and there's an idiosyncrasy in the zoning by law, which would allow, or require the board to pass on the adequacy of the nitrogen handling qualities of the system. We permitted that, oh, last year, and the construction is, has been proceeding from what we saw, and what has been reported in due, in due course. However, in view, and I'm summarizing this in the, in the applicant will do, present it again, the, the applicant's claims, that since the town sewer will eventually be established, that the developer wants to be relieved from the requirements of putting in an expensive system, which would comply with the requirements of the zoning by law. And it's not, in that district, the way the zoning by law is constructed, the zoning board has to decide that, rather than the Board of Health, and it, it's a money problem, because it, that something like $37,000 can be saved, which would otherwise, if the applicant had relief and wasn't required to put in. to put in that kind of system, which would all be obviate, obviated eventually, I'm told, when the town puts in the sewer. Since we're talking about, as we've seen a couple of times, the nitrogen processing qualities of the sewage system, we have publicly invited Mr. Canning from the Board of Health to come in and educate us as to what the effects might be, say, if we gave this kind of relief for, say, two years before the sewer is put in. So we'll take some expert testimony, and that's the only thing that's really up in the air. Blue, the Bluefish Outfitters, which was a publicized dispute where Beth Bishop was, that's been, that application's been withdrawn to be revisited perhaps later on, after a lot of groundwork is done amongst the applicant and the neighbors.
So there was a sign erected recently on a structure on the corner of Main and Tonsit, which made me, which reminded me of that pending action. Has there been any, any further dialogue?
No, that was subject of a complaint against us and.
Right, right.
Okay.
I think that's the only pending.
I haven't seen, I haven't seen the sign.
I'm not aware of it.
The issue is that there was, whatever you call them, a sign post, and the variance sought relative to the zoning was about this signed post. The sign that is being referred to as a sign that sits on the building, and I doesn't, I don't think comes in within the purview of this committee, that's my view, but I've noticed that there, I mean, it's almost like a piece of what he sells that's up there.
Well, it's not supposed to be like that, though. On the barn, you mean, Bruce?
Yeah.
No, no. I don't think.
What does, what does it say?
Company names, business name.
It does have business name?
No, I don't think it has his name. I think it has the, the name of the craft it was.
Anyways, that, that's working through the channels, and we'll come back to us at some point.
I haven't had a complaint, so I don't, I don't, I don't get out of the office much now that, now that I finally do have a full-time assistant, I don't get out as much as I used to, so, you know, sign, sign complaints are usually complaints.
I just wanted to say that the thing with the nitrogen was that there were numbers being thrown around, like 15 parts per whatever, 34 parts or whatever, and at least some of us, was it an increase of a teensy amount that was doubling, and so to render an intelligent and informed decision, we felt we needed.
So that, so that's something that was, has been heard and is continued?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay. I understand.
You were, I thought you were looking for open, open items.
Understand.
Everything else is all been finished and decided and.
I think if, if, depending on how town meeting goes, we could end up seeing more of those sorts of things.
I, what is, it was, it was just tricky that, how that kind of a question would be in front of us, and just in general, I mean, it, it isn't just the possibility of the sewer, that I can understand, that stalls and sets, and it was hardship upon the developer to have to spend that money, which a lot of people would say was waste, would be wasted, but, but, but there are occasions where we'd have to figure out and decipher whether the numbers were there. I don't understand, Mr. Canning's going to help us out, I don't know the man myself, but I've heard of him, and I'm sure he knows what he's doing.
The other issue is, was the financial hardship that was being recommended or approved, and a question of was that substantial, or was it not? And my, my take was basically, was, why didn't they determine this when they made, first made the application, instead of waiting later to ask for the ANI to be removed? You know, that's, and I also, in order to speak to the fact that it's minimal, you can go through the calculations to determine what the additional groundwater impact of that amount of nitrogen, it's probably going to be 0.02 percent, but nevertheless, it's a, it's more a matter of principle also as to what will happen in the future because of a decision here, and I understand precedence doesn't mean anything, but tell that to a lawyer.
Also, it's real unclear when the sewer system will be completed. In other words, some people saying 20, but you never know. We're talking about. You don't know. Indefinite things. All I know is that, from my experience in seeing one applicant after another come in, that you price out your project at your peril. There's a lot of folks coming back in and downscaling, because it was, there's, there's always price, and then the price becomes X plus 20 percent, and that's, that can't be done, so you end up with a project which is X minus 20 percent. But that's just this human condition, I think. Is there a motion to adjourn? Very well, Mr. Javelin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cole, all of us in favor? Thank you for helping.